You're way back there, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, let's set an aside, let's go. Call order.
It's working. Eric Sampson.
Yep.
Dennis.
Here.
Reeve.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
Sweller.
Yes.
Scott.
Here.
Tarquini. A member probably emailed and said he would not be here tonight.
Prove the agenda. Make motion to approve the agenda as written.
Well, second it.
Uh, all in favor to approve the agenda? I.
I.
Opposed. Uh, minutes from April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Y'all have that in your package. Um.
Short minutes. But everything's there.
I thought they were very well done.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, that negatively.
Uh, sure, because we need that information as agenda records.
I thought that the, um, everything was on there, a couple of spelling, but I don't think I need to point them out, so. Uh, I will one, though, you've got Don Wild down, it's actually Don White.
Okay.
And I think, uh, him. He says, him started the discussion, but I think he said he stated the discussion. And that's back a little farther when we were talking about the, um, report page. Back on when we were talking about, uh, the, uh, draft amendments, uh, for administrative.
Oh, the. See, is there their?
Yeah, something. I, I don't know what page it is, but.
Yeah, it's on page seven.
All right. Uh, want to approve?
I have one other thing on page eight. Real quick, Ken. Um, under the report, a township board representative, we have, uh, the first sentence, he offered thanks to the township clerk for his IT assistance.
Yeah.
Maybe just take, I don't know what the IT.
Oh, well, it was for coming to the meetings and helping with this.
Oh, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
But yeah, that's fine, Mr. Wolf.
Anyone else? Minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
I.
All opposed? Um, I'd like to back up just for a moment. Um. Very broke, although we have a new number to welcome to our board, we have Stan Dollar. So I'm happy to have you along if, uh, we were short a guy.
Thank you.
Or maybe for quite a while, now we got a seat filled, so it's good to have.
That's been a, uh, accustomed, not to put you on the spot, but the new member has a moment to speak a little bit, a little more, a little better.
That's like telling my family background and everything and all my, you know, bad things.
All the bad things.
So I'm Dave Queller, uh, we moved here, bought a house on Walloon, uh, in two thousand and seven, uh, used it primarily as a vacation home for multiple years, uh, post-COVID, my wife and I moved here full-time from, at this time, San Luis, Missouri, and have been here since, uh, early two thousand, what, two thousand and twenty-one? Um, I have been a healthcare executive throughout my career. Um, I'm semi-retired now, uh, predominantly doing some consulting and some, um, investing in some small, uh, companies. Um, have a, uh, background, uh, from my university days and also sort of things in the political science arena. Uh, my dad was in public policy for forty-plus years. Uh, was on a planning commission in our hometown of Harper Woods, Michigan for many years. So, uh, just like to get back to the community and help out what we can.
Great. Sounds good.
You're a chip. I'm a chip walk.
All right.
I wasn't gonna bring that up.
It's all right. I'm proud of you, boy, we do it, my wife might do a lot of things for the university, uh, month or two, so.
All right, so let's go back to public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone on non-agenda items in the public? Not seeing any. Hearing any, so we're gonna move on, the new business. Uh, case PC number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two-five. It's a draft, uh, considered a draft amendment. The resort township zoning ordinance, uh, Article ten-twenty, that's twenty, administration by amending section twenty oh five-seven pertaining to minor amendments to an approved site plan. And we talked about this before briefly at previous meeting, and uh, you actually have language in your packets that describe what that actually means now. And, um, so this is actually a public hearing, so I actually have to open that up.
Yeah.
And so, but I, I guess what I'd like to do is staff, I'd like you to introduce briefly and review what.
So th- this was part of a, a package of amendments that the planning commission worked on last year, um, sent to the township board. Township board, um, sent this section back, and this would be for minor amendments to approve site plans. Um, that there are six criteria in the, in the sample ordinance that if the recommended amendment meets one of those criterias, rather than coming back to the planning commission, it can be approved administratively. Um, it can't, administrative approval can't change the character of the plan. It can't violate an express condition imposed by the planning commission, and again, it has to be one of those six items to be eligible for administrative approval. So the way this new draft reads, um, it'd be four people that would review it administratively, the zoning administrator, planner, the chair of the planning commission, and the township, um, board representative on the planning commission. All four of them would have to unanimously agree to approve it. That would be in writing, and if that occurs, then a minor amendment to an approved site plan would take place. The applicant would then have to provide an amended site plan showing that change. So it's a pretty, pretty common, um, provision, a lot of communities have it, the county has it. So we're just trying to streamline things for, uh, minor changes.
The change from when it came back before is adding an elected official. The board member who's a trustee and appointed through the planning commission to put him on that committee. So instead of three, it'll be four, people think, well, it's an even number, it doesn't matter, it's gotta be unanimous, but there will be an elected official then on this committee that makes the decision. If they don't approve it, then it has to go back to a full-site plan member.
Yep. In, in the public hearing, the notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the Potaski News Review on May tenth, and I did not receive any comments.
All right. We can, at this point, before we can board, if you have questions, you can hold them until we deliberate, and I closed the public hearing, but right now I'm gonna open it up to the floor uh, and ask for anyone from the public to support or oppose, and and, uh, we don't have a big crowd tonight, but, Denny?
As far as our township resident, I would, I would support this change.
Okay.
I think it's a good change.
You never work on a PUD.
Yeah, no.
Uh, okay, noted, anyone else? Comment? No, okay. Well, well, it's a short public, uh, comment area, so I could say it's also a public meeting. Hearing portion of it, and go right to the board deliberation. Um, I, I have one question for Steph, and that is listed the four people involved to take a look at this. Um, how would we? How would that work? So if somebody comes and applies, oh, hey, we want to amend and something simple, so you just put out an email and then we would have to respond, or how, how would that, how would that portion of it work?
Well, I think we can figure that out, the way that it, this works, it little traverses, we actually meet, it's, so the four people, we pick a time, we'd actually get together for, you know, everyone, we're review it ahead.
Do that on its whole with an email, but these work, give a few options.
Yeah. But it's like, you know, get together ten minutes.
Either way, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then you'd be the other player, so I, do you have any questions on that? I personally think it's a good idea, I mean, if the.
It wouldn't take so long.
They're directly involved with most of the applicants' questions and answers, and so, I mean, a lot of this could be cut off at the pass before it gets to us. So. I personally, I think it's for the. Any thoughts? I'll make a motion to approve, uh, I actually think you guys may. Uh, motion to approve. Uh, Good following hearing held on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, IP source for your move to recommend approval, township board trustees ordinance number two uh, of twenty-twenty-five, which will amend Article twenty, administration by amending section two thousand and five pertaining to same plan review. Second. So we have motion and second, all in favor of, uh, approval?
I.
All opposed? So that will go to the board of trustees for recommended approval, and now save it from there and get back to us. That sound great?
Yep.
Okay. In your report, you'll let us know.
That's right.
Okay, so let's move on to case, uh, number PC, number four dash twenty-two-five. The site plan review application submitted by Lakeview Builders LLC on behalf of Lady Hawk LLC for site plan review of the construction of Village Heights project within the Upper East Village of Bay Harbor at thirty-seven sixty-four Charlevoix Village Heights project was uh, with Charlevoix Road, the project, property is more particularly described uh, as the tax partial that's listed. So this also is a public hearing.
No, just, just site plan review.
Oh, this is, this one is a site plan review, you're direct. So so we have an applicant who's asking for uh, adjustment to the existing PUD, as I read it, but I, I guess what I'd like to do is.
The PUD has been amended. So now we have a site plan to meet that PUD that you. Just a while, I can talk.
April twenty-twenty-four, somewhere in there. Yeah, so I guess we'll turn it over to staff to kind of give us the background on it, uh, if you would.
And I don't mean to confuse you, but this is a rather large PUD, and it's had many changes. It started, um, before Resort Township had its own zoning, the county approved it in, uh, well, it was before two thousand, and then in two thousand and two Resort Township had their own zoning, in two thousand and three, we started having, uh, some PUD amendments, PUD two. Uh, and this went through several uh, iterations, um, and part of that is because as conditions change over thirty years, the original plans for the area didn't totally make sense. Um, what they have now, however, still does meet the same number of whole units and square footage, that did not change, it's where it's gonna be. The area we're talking about here is on the city side of the main entrance to the park. Um, however, to get there, you don't do it from thirty-one or Charlevoix Street, you get it from the road behind.
Cliff's Drive.
Cliff's Drive there. So there won't be any change in, in that traffic pattern, they'll have to turn at the light to get in. The biggest change in, in, in that area, this has nothing to do with the site plan, lets you know what was approved. The, the rather large commercial area has been discounted quite a bit, it was thirty-six thousand per feet, it's down to thirty-five hundred. Um, and parking, it's not a black asphalt lot anymore. Uh, it's been reduced by, from a hundred and sixty to a hundred and twenty-eight parking spots. That, however, is not part of this site plan. Site plan before you now is residential component. That's five buildings, each one of five units. The, uh, there are also, um, um, bowling garages, uh, detach, detach, so thank you. Um, there are twenty-one of them. I'm losing my spot here. And, uh, everything that was presented in, in the plans, and you all have large plans as well as eleven by seventeen. Uh, in my mind, meets the requirements of the ordinance and the adjustments PUD, it meant everything. Um, the land, as we said, is, is PUD two, plan unit development informs to all the requirements for Bay Harbor and the PUD two. We're talking about three point three-five acres for this component. It does not include the commercial, which will be about a quarter of an acre. Um, the bike path will be in front of the area, um, a concern for some people, of course, was what are you gonna see? You see the back of these garages, however, they're planning eighty-nine uh, bushes between the garages and the bike path. And that's something that isn't finding, some of those numbers are specified counted from the drawings, so that that can't change, it can be bigger, but it can't be small. And they do have to be taken care of, so if we lose a couple, we have to come back. Uh, the building height will be less than thirty-five feet, that conforms to the master plan height limitations there. Twenty-one detached garage units. There will be, because of the garage units and in front of the building, they totaled sixty-two parking space. It won't be an actual jungle that's marked, however, um, it'll be broken up by the different units. There are eight maple trees, they need, or a minimum, with a minimum five-inch caliper, are shown around the garage units. Eighty-nine cedar units behind them, and twelve ornamental trees to line the entrance, the entrance is on Cliff's Drive. The rubbish areas, there are two of them, will be gated. Um, it, from my calculations, I don't think you stated this, from the highway itself to the back of the property, it's over twenty-five-foot drop-in land in elevation. So, uh, we're gated quite a bit that way, if, if, it's not like it's on a level ground. So we're, we're gaining twenty-five feet, the building won't be over thirty-five feet. The fire chief did complete his analysis and said it does meet the fire department needs, I think you received a copy of that letter. And some of that came after the, the package was put together. No street lights are shown, but all lighting will be shielded and downlit. It will be located on the building. There are certainly adequate areas, plenty of space for the snow management. Um, it will be, they agreed in the plans to haul it as needed, haul it out of the area. The sign at the main entrance, which is off Cliff's Drive, will be a limestone sign. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to go into it further, and sample motions are presented to give you a, a little bit of an idea.
We did also receive, they were in the packet, uh, emails from the city utility department and the public safety officer, and they both signed off on the plans.
Those that look like a letter of drain.
Right, from their engineer, yeah. You know, complete site plan, there was a grading plan, a landscape plan, and stormwater plan, and drainage water, I mean, elevation drawings, so it was the full, um, site plan package. So are we approving the residences tonight, or the residences plus the commercial property?
Not the commercial, that's not presented, it's just the residences, twenty-five and twenty-one garages. And the city of Potaski has approved utilities for those two, they didn't talk about the commercial yet either.
You described where the commercial is, just for reference, I know it's not part of this.
Pull up the site plan, or does this work?
This works.
Okay.
So here's the commercial piece, which is right here at the corner of Cliff's Drive and Bay Harbor Drive. So this is the commercial piece, there are eighteen spaces here with a building, not yet determined on its, on footprint. That's why we're presenting that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Here with the sign Randy was talking about here on Cliff's Drive. Then the.
The five buildings are shown there, each one with five units. And you point to the garage and.
Yeah, here's the garage, there's twenty-one here, yeah. These are the two trash enclosures. And we're anticipating those will be similar architecture to the garages. Ornamental trees, maple trees. And granted, there was quite a bit of grade drop from US thirty-one, I forget the exact grade here, I think it's seven oh three um, down to this intersection, this is the highest building here, this building, uh, or is six feet lower than unit number one, building one, that's building five.
Right? I don't have, this is site plan review, and I guess I don't have to open it up to a public, uh, comment. There, there's no public anyway, except for, but I'd be happy to entertain a comment.
Yeah, I have a comment. Probably been twenty-five, thirty years, Danny, since we've worked together.
Yes, it has.
And you came and you said, hi, Rick, I thought. That, that property has been a commercial since day one when the PUD was put together. Just waiting for what's gonna go in there.
Yeah.
Now we know. Interesting.
Yeah, we're excited about this project.
When I first looked at it, uh, I wasn't sure how all that was gonna fit in there, but it's well laid out.
Yeah.
And so. Uh, any other questions from the board of the applicant or staff?
I do have to add one more comment, too. I almost hate to say it to Denny, but it was a pleasure to have everything laid out, everything that was presented, you could understand it, and, and it explained ordinance item by item, that's really helpful whenever we, we review things.
Thanks.
You're welcome, thanks.
He's never been here before. And he doesn't, he doesn't understand the hurrah.
So there's no sight lighting other than building lights, basically. Shield, and they're gonna be shielded per ordinance and whatever, so.
That on the main buildings and the garages?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got some renderings of, you know, soft lighting down with.
Most of the other.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be on the north side of the garages, and, um, you know, there'll, there'll be some on the south side of the entranceway going up to the second floor, you notice.
Yeah.
Is there anyone on? Someone listening in?
Nope.
Hey. Did we receive, and I didn't see any in the packet, any letters of opposition or support from, uh, neighborhood?
No.
I mean, Danny's probably been talking to everybody in the neighborhood anyway, so, what, what's the general? I mean, it seemed like the last time you were here, when we actually did the PUD change, we had more commentary than, than currently, you know, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's really, um, it's, it's right in stride with what we presented at the PUD change, minor changes as far as weakening the site plan a bit. Um, Jerry and, um, Cherry and Jeff Alhart are the owners of the, are buying the property, and we'll be working with them on the development part of the property, so. Um, yeah, we're, we're really excited about it, we've got a launch program coming up, and.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had people talking initially when it was the PUD change, but it was, in my mind, it was more inquisitive, what, what is it gonna be? Uh, when they realized a change in the parking lot and the commercial, most of them seemed happy, you may have seen it differently, but nobody asked me a word about the site.
Be it, no.
After it's gone. Um, residential.
Yep.
Questions? Comments? Pretty, pretty good-looking, uh, veil. I wish they all were good.
You're not the only one.
Yeah.
We try to do our homework.
And you did, thank you.
As I was reading through the, uh, findings and data, I was waiting for the variances in heights and
Yeah, the, the building number one, the one that I said was the highest, is basically right at what we presented during the PUD master plan change. That originally.
Well, uh, I don't have any other questions or comments or suggestions, I don't know if you weren't, I mean, he's got a lot of screening going on the back, I noticed the only comments that were there was a comment put in by the planner, uh, left screening as in kind of an open eye into the board, so he's got plenty, to me, as far as I'm concerned, there's plenty between bike path uh, and those buildings. Uh, the only other location is, you know, down Cliff's, or down Bay Harbor Drive, if there's something you, you all see there that you wanna address, but and that was the on the site plan, isn't it?
Yeah, there is existing vegetation there, too. Okay. And wasn't there a parking space question?
I think. They're not all marked, that's why I wanted to specify that in my discussion, because I couldn't get up to that number, but then I realized inside and right in front of the door of each garage, you can park.
Yeah, so those were the spaces that we didn't account for, but we figured it out. Yeah, okay, so that's different than what was on here, right?
Right, there's, there's, uh, five, uh, neighborhood electric vehicle, um, parking spaces under each building, so that's what this indicates here, um, plus the, plus a garage for each each resident, plus the detached.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Nobody's here um questioning any more screening, so I'm guess, I'm, I'm in favor of what's wrong, if nobody else is.
I, I like the fact that they're staggered off to the east there, I think when you come, you know, if you're heading south, you kind of come around that corner, and you wanna look that way, I like the fact that you haven't staggered along the bike path there in the east area.
And then we can, you know, we can manicure those, there are the, the view corridor, which Rick is very aware of, is right here.
Right.
So that's, that remains open looking out past, um, past that area here. And we do, we won't, you know, gotta make these maybe a little bit looser, just so it's not such a you know, a hard wall, if you will.
Fifty-fifty, you're gonna find people who want the screening and others who want
Right.
more view.
Exactly.
You know, so it's like.
Yeah.
Well, if I find at least eighty-nine. I'm good with it, you guys, whatever you want to. Or if you have more questions or comments on something. Any more discussion? All right, I'll, I'll make a motion. Based on the information in the five twenty-one, twenty-two-five memo titled case PC number four dash two zero two five from planner Dr. Freckburg and zoning administrator Ken Lane, due to the findings of fact as stated, I, Tim Howard, move to improve site plan for Bay Harbor Upper East Village area at three-seven-six-four Charlevoix Road, US thirty-one. Tax ID number two four five two one eight zero three four zero zero dash zero two one, as proposed in zoning permit application signed by Ben Spriya on four twenty-eight, twenty-two-five. The ten-page site work plans by Benchmark Engineering stands prior, Brian Boland. Benchmark Engineering, April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, and unsigned rear elevation by Alexander Vogartson Associates. That's second to motion. Uh, any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all for a vote, uh, all in favor of motion, they aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry unanimously. And we have a site plan.
Great, thank you all very much.
Pretty exciting.
Information. Yeah, good. Thanks, have a good evening.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you, everybody.
You want it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does he want me to sign now or he'll bring it, he'll bring it?
He'll probably bring it back up.
We can move on.
Yeah. Yep.
Let's go on to all business, uh.
Yeah, um, I'm after NHS and I got two kids interested, so they have that.
Are they gonna apply or have they handed an application into you? Marty was kinda heading up a little bit.
And I just made some of the application and they've been like asking.
All right.
It's on the website as well, the township website.
Uh, so where do we go from here? So you, so there, they have the application. They gotta hand it into you or to the board or to?
They can says email it to you by the thirtieth of chairs. Um, and then I don't know what, what does it look like afterwards?
Well, I think that in private or in committee, they decide uh, uh, what applicant they're, I guess more interested in is how we've done it in the past. And you know, in the past, pretty much everybody's pod has been pretty impressive and it's actually hard to decide, you know, so. Um, I say get them in and then we'll go from there, right?
Is there an interview or is it strictly off of the application?
I was interviewed by.
Yep.
It has been in the past.
Holly and.
Well, Scott did it.
Holly and Scott.
Yeah.
And right now Marty's on it and one other, I don't know, there was someone else gonna do it with Marty or not. Not so far, somebody I could appoint. Him, yours. You might know him.
I know, I actually, I've been going long enough. I don't know.
Maybe someone's kid that you've.
Yeah, probably, it's like our grandkid, yeah.
Well, I appreciate it, so. She gets emails from Marty and I guess.
You know how to gather up with his time. When we can.
Make sure.
Phone or email. Great. Good, thanks for doing that. So we can't let you hold that easy anyway, you know.
Right.
For a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Alex approached you when you got yours?
Oh, yeah, he talked to me for a bit and I was gonna work with government for tomorrow, but then Liam Dryer, I believe, was the name. I don't know if that's familiar, but just stopped responding to making notes. Like we zoomed once and he was like, very like, oh, yeah, well, like get this, I'll do the documents and stuff, and then nothing. And we, I don't know, I think it was, we do also reached out, maybe it's Scott, I don't remember. I don't know.
Could give you the information.
All right. Reposing, and we don't have a representative from.
We've had so many applications, though. We're trying to filter them, so we give you a, a lower number. We haven't had any application. It's still.
Uh, you mean on PDR or?
I'm down to the next.
Uh, with no report on housing, the PDR sounds like we're getting some applications, though. Non-zero.
No. Hopefully, we can drum up some business. The Conservancy is working on it. And so they're working with two, one.
All right, I think it's one. It was two, but I think it sounded one.
In, in the township?
Yeah. Sorry, what's PDR? Uh, it's purchase, purchase, develop.
We have a, we have a program where people who are in can preserve their farms over their open land. Uh, and the conservancies will.
Yeah, where, yeah, where the, yeah, I knew what that, that was, so.
The township has a board, has put away money, and we've drawn down a little on it, but it's the level now is not quite three hundred thousand.
Yeah, the two sixty-something.
Well, it was, but we have to pay out.
Yeah.
So the county can, or the township can match or throw some money in along with it?
Everybody has to agree.
Conservancy has the, yeah. I know there's activity at the Conservancy to do a lot of that work, but not sure they've identified names.
We have to date, I think, what, three projects in place? Does that sound right? We had Crowther's.
Two, we just.
Yeah.
Guess there's just the two. So. Working on, you know. At first it was hard to uh, for people to uh, understand the concept. They, they thought they were, the township was trying to buy up all the land and it's really not what it was and.
And to make it clear, that's something that's forced. It's on the landlord's decision to go ahead with.
Strictly voluntary.
Yeah, very much strictly.
But it's, it's used all over the country, so I didn't know what that acronym is, so yeah.
We wanna make sure it's available here.
So we have an open program. We're looking for applications. All right, correspondence, move on to correspondence. I, Zoning Administrator, report.
We had, uh, had my report in there and then the planning report. I also had the letter from the County Planning Commission. I'd already sent that to everybody, but I weren't officially, we're in the packet. Uh, just an update to, um, Gypsy Vodka did Friday and get me an updated site plan. Um, and I told them I, I wasn't gonna cram it through, um, over, or, or the weekend, so they'll be coming back in June, uh, to meet one of the conditions of their approval. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention, too, was this time. Um, the webmaster, the township's web, webmaster told me that everybody was issued a township email. And she suggested that we all start using that, because if there's a FOIA request and you're using your personal email, it could get messy separating planning commission business from personal stuff. So does everyone have access to that resort township email? Okay, I'll, I'll have, um, Gina reach out to everybody and kinda say.
I know. Where it was put in place, but it kinda got lost between the cracks on my end. I know that I, I've not used it and. We're using our, our personal, our email.
Yes, I'll have, I'll have her reach out to everybody.
I, I would personally rather have it be the township's email. Keep it separate.
She would, too, that's why.
For those who've been deposed in lawsuits in the past, I would prefer that.
Yeah.
Not personal lawsuits, but.
Yeah.
Copy lawsuits. They like to look for everything.
Oh, they do.
Yeah.
Or I'll have the, we'll, we'll be in touch on that. And that's my report.
Uh, planning commission comments are reported to Township Board Rep then, too. He gets.
Okay, um, so the big news, I think, probably most have heard, if you haven't, um, the Blackbird rezoning, um, that we denied was actually approved by the board at the last meeting, so. Um, I don't know, Ken, if you've heard anything from the applicant on that or?
They have reached out. Um, you know, the next step in the process is their statement of conditions. There's a document that they're gonna have to draft and record. Um, and then they'll, will be back for site plan review, so they're wanting to meet with Randy and I to kinda start the talking about them putting their site plan together, but that'll probably be later in the summer or fall before they come back.
So what that means is we recommended denial and the board voted uh, to approve rather than take our recommendation. So that actually changed right there, the the uh, the zoning was approved essentially, the reason.
Yes.
By them not accepting our denial.
Right.
So it's correct?
Yes, with the conditions that.
There could, yeah, the three conditions.
Yep, yeah.
So I would expect them to come back with a site plan review based on that.
And it's a conditional result, and that's why those three conditions are pretty important.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Tim?
Um, the only other big topic of discussion at the last meeting was the compost site down on Resort Pike. Um, it's still closed. Um, we're just trying to weigh the, we have some folks that wanted it open, but we're trying to weigh the benefit of opening it, because there's still a lot of brush around. And the, we don't have near the capacity or the budget to handle all the brush that might end up there, so the environmental committee is gonna take it back for discussion. Um, look at maybe open it up on like just Saturdays for a while, kinda monitor it, you you know, take the, the lawn debris and some of those, you know, grass clippings and things like that, but try to keep folks from bringing a whole you know, much trailers full of brush in there. Township has to take care of us. Um, those are really the two big things that are discussed at the the last meeting.
Uh, reported CBA representative?
Yep, we met, uh, May twelfth on an application from Lamar Signs on the billboard down on Charlevoi Avenue. Um, they wanted to modify it and, uh, as it stands, it's currently existing, um, non-conformant use. I get that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, they submitted an application to modify the sign. They wanted to make it s- smaller, but digital. And, uh, so we had a public hearing on that and that application was ultimately denied by the CBA.
Where is this at?
Down by, or Subaru by the bay. It used to be of the golf cart place now, go on the corner of Eppert. Go back to the east. The west side. There's that little billboard there. I've driven five thousand times and everyone even noticed it. So we'll stand as is.
Yeah, it's a big one. It's, it's not informative both use and dimensionally. Um, it is hard, it's not noticeable.
Yeah.
I didn't notice.
Uh, mission or comment? I only have one. I'd like to thank, uh, all the pro cleanup helpers. Uh, uh, it was, uh, I would say about an average hall. I think Lake Grove had actually a little more than we have in the past. Um, or last year, for sure. Yeah, people wrote it was about the same, you know, so, but Lake Grove was up just a little bit, I thought, from the last past years, for whatever reason, doesn't matter, but that's the report. And it rained.
I wanna apologize for not being, you know, proceeding.
Wasn't gonna bring out names. Marty.
I, I do a pop.
No problem.
Thank you for.
Uh, public comments on non-agenda. No, I'm sorry, big pardon. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, and I don't know.
And I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, I can, how do we look at on rezoning the corridor to meet our future use plan? So that maybe we just have to fight that fight one time instead of on a recurring basis, every time somebody brings out a proposal. Since it's in the future use plan, any as if all of that was commercial as, as you said, we wanted it to be, then we wouldn't have to fight this fight every time this was set, well, we said it should be.
I know during the, um, when we looked at that property down through there, uh, during our, uh, master plan review, most of that is already commercial or some of it is, quite a bit of it is all down through there. I think that Blackbird parcel was one of the last remaining R ones down through there, but I think you guys could bring us a map and confirm that, but I think. No, I'm just saying, I was just gonna say that, that maybe already is rezoned down through there, most of it. Yeah. And, and by the way, I think it's, it's a good comment we don't want to discuss, because it's, it's in the master plan goals and strategy and so.
And it makes sense. It's the only place we can really do that. It's the only place with infrastructure, but every time we bring it on. Everybody comes out and we work the fire.
I wanna know what could be changed.
Yeah.
So this is the existing zoning.
Here's the Blackbird parcel right here.
Which is currently our one. So the orange is all our one.
Yes. Yeah.
And so what is the, the red is all our two?
This is our two.
Okay.
This is PUD, the pink. Uh, industrials, the gray. And then this is farm forest, the green.
So uh, as you go south, uh, west, if you go west on the, from the Blackbird property, uh, there appears to be farm forest down through there along that corridor as well?
What's the striking one?
It's kinda pinkish, but it's hard to tell.
Which one are we talking about?
That's Crooked Tree, west of.
That's the Blackbird.
This is Crooked Tree. This is.
Blackbird again.
Uh, this is the city's, the fire station.
And that's his other property there.
Yeah, this is the summit, this both these.
Which is currently PUD, correct?
No, uh, R two.
R two.
Yeah.
Right. So what is the property that is what is Crooked Tree then considered?
Crooked Tree is, I believe, uh, PUD one. PUD one, this is PUD two, the, the solid.
Think so for, for a novice, where does the corridor start? Does it start at Townsend and go all the way through to the proximity line? Or?
I think it would basically be the city limits all the way out to, I think we considered it to be Bay Shore, right?
Yeah.
Down Line Road.
Town Line Road.
Which is Bay Shore.
That's the, so that is the, that is the cortical corridor, right?
Right, so we're viewing as the corridor, yeah.
So there's a, I mean, every one of those parcels along there. You know, I mean, like we had, we had the, the Gypsy rezoning. And that would have fallen in that corridor.
There.
Well.
They didn't rezonate, they just got a special use permit.
Right, but what I mean is it wouldn't have if it would have been done, we wouldn't even have had to discuss that, right?
That was part of the U D, wasn't it?
No, that, they're farm forest and they, they would still had to come for a special use permit for that wedding.
Right, but what I mean is if we had done the commercial, then they wouldn't have.
No, they still would have. It's a special use that wedding event. Regardless of. Yeah. Yeah, it's a special use approval for that wedding venue, uh, uh, use. And technically, the way that that's written, it can, it's only allowed in, in the agricultural and residentially, so districts. So it wouldn't have been good for them to be going to.
There we go. There would, there would have been a stronger feeling to be commercial. So as you move, to answer your question, as you move westward from Gypsy and out towards Camp Daggett and uh, it's all, there's a lot of farm forests out there. Uh, but some of it is pretty wet. And so it's itself, uh, you know, regulating itself basically out of the, out of the pressures. But the one parcel there that is up for sale currently is right on the end of Lake Grove Road, which we approved as a commission, uh, assisted living. Um, was supposed to be on sixty units and they got shut down by the
Eagle.
Eagle, and so they were gonna go and build thirty units instead. Uh, because of the wet area that they were trying to build in. And then the next thing we know, it's up for sale. So that is commercial, currently that's, I think.
You. That's right here. That's PUD two.
That's been.
Yeah, that was a men, that was rezoned to PUD two.
That, that's the old barn, right? The old, the old horse farm?
Yeah.
No, that's.
That's for Gypsy.
That's Gypsy.
No, no, there's a.
There's a barn.
There's a barn, there's a barn there.
Yes.
And they park the, well, the, the, the mortality place parks.
Yes. So if you just cross north west of that, on the highway there, there's a, like, there's a street, orthopedics. Some, they put it up for sale, so I assume they're bailing out of there.
I've not heard from them.
So, so, and that is PUD? So, so, and that is PUD?
Yes.
So sounds like we have our two and PUDs all on through there, really. We don't, I mean, there's only one that's.
Farm forest.
And far, far forest beyond, but before we get there, it's all PUD. Gypsy, uh, that, uh, assisted living partial.
No, Gypsy's not.
Gypsy's farm forest, yeah.
Yeah.
Where's residential members? Where, where's Gip, where's Gypsy? Gypsy right? No, Gypsy's all around here.
It's like right there.
Yeah.
Right in there.
Yeah, in this area.
How much of that would actually want to be commercial, I mean, they're better off leaving along and then fighting the fight? Maybe on some of it, I don't know. The farm forest allows for more open space discussion versus commercial probably is, has a higher density availability, that's all I mean, that would be one thought process, you know?
Right, but are we trying to limit high density or are we trying to allow some high density? To get some?
Well, what would you do, go, you could go to R two along there or some, because that seems to be what people are asking for. And that would allow some density.
Is that, is, was that what our future use said? I mean. It includes, the, the commercial designation includes multifamily residential.
So commercial would be the umbrella. But the commercial we have now in the zoning doesn't allow the residential high density, so the future land use plan is referring to something.
Yeah, doesn't match the.
So you'd want, aren't you? We have to make something.
It seems like R two might be the better designation to allow. I mean, because housing's the target.
Yeah.
It's aimed like, so R two would be a better. Uh, designation than commercial, commercials as discussed.
But then, yeah, you may have to reconsider the master plan that says commercial. Commercial and high, it's a combination. We don't have that combination now.
Unfortunately, it was written that way, but as it's turning out, it seems like the pressures are more leaning towards R two than commercial.
Sure, does the master plan say commercial all the way through there?
Yes.
That whole corridor?
Yeah, Gypsy vodka was designated as commercial.
It generalizes, it says the one thirty-one or the thirty-one corridor, so it just generalizes.
But is there a, is there a map showing that?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
No, this is the zoning map.
No, but they, but they use the same map.
Especially use.
Use the same map.
Future use label it has.
Yeah. So they, they're using the same map, it looks just like that.
I thought I remembered that it was still farm forest, once you got kind of past.
Future land use map looks like that right there. And they, and they've got it bright red, you pass that around, it's, it's bright red, the whole corridor.
What page is that on?
Uh.
Port ten.
Bringing it up.
I'm trying to find it, you know.
What page?
Thirty-four.
But not all the way down.
Yeah, there is.
Only.
There you go.
Just past Camp Daggett.
Yeah, so it does go to.
Then it goes to farm forest.
Camp Daggett. Just west of Camp Daggett.
Curse, that is, that's wet.
Quite a bit of wet, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's gonna self, you know, you know. I don't know what the right term is, but it's.
Yeah, there's that one direction there, because that's not gonna change, that's a LTC preserve, the dark green.
Right. So I don't know how you circumvent the fact that it says commercial in our future land use and then we're thinking a different path maybe, and I'm not sure what to do with that, actually.
The intent of that, the way I, I understand it when we went through the process, that's the desire for the future development, it doesn't mean that's what we allow in our our existing ordinance, and that's why it gives you time to come up with a category. So we don't have it now, it'd be a different category. But just like we don't have, the high density they talked about, R two gets pretty close. But we had talked then about a different category to cover that as well.
Would that be something we want to hit run or do we just want to retire?
Well, any applicant's going to refer to that right there.
Yep.
It's gonna, they're gonna come in and as shown on your map, you know, your strategies and goals, it's already been brought to us.
Every time, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we either address it or, or just face it as it comes, those are our choices.
But what a hot, what a high density landlord would come and say, you have, call this commercial, but there's no designation between high density and commercial, those are, that's, commercial's a pretty broad terminology.
Under the master plan.
Under the master plan. So you either have to, you either have to use that umbrella and, and take each, each individual fight as it goes, or you have to, to your point, create a separate zoning that says high density or and or commercially. Right? Sorry.
Is there such a thing as the applicants are gonna come and, and apply for exactly what he just said. Your, your map says future commercial, that's what we're asking to do. The only way we really can circumvent it is as they come in, you can say, well, you know, we were looking at this as R two, would you consider, you know? At, at that point, that's all we've got.
Yeah.
It seems like, so if they say, okay, well, let's, let's look at that, you know, and then they might apply for that and then it would give us some grounds to go to R two, because that's what the applicants asking for. I mean, how do you, how do you go back and, there's no such thing as amending that, is there?
There is, but it's, there's, it's a process similar to we.
So what's there to be a high density in R two?
Well, there's quite a bit of language to define what identity in R two is. I mean, each site had, will allow so many, so much coverage and that's what you have to look at each site.
Yeah. Based on the open space, it allows you to increase your density.
So if it's a bigger chunk, obviously.
And still, I consider our R two is not what many areas have as high density. They, they don't have high density in the township, right? It's not in zoning. The, yeah, the R two is, is more limiting than a high density equivalent somewhere else.
Yes.
That's, yeah.
So if we did move into committee and look at rezoning that commercial, what, what would that mean to us? Means people could go in there and, and if anything allowed, allowed the use by right within commercial, doesn't necessarily mean housing, it could be.
Doesn't.
Grocery stores, it could be.
Gas stations.
Gas stations, uh.
That's just why I think it'd be a zoning change before you get into any rezoning, you have to have a new designation.
You mean define a new designation?
Define a new designation. Create a new district.
So instead of calling it commercial or R two, you'd call it R two B or R two, whatever, whatever, well. Well, how hard a, a language is, is that to put together, is that a whole, that's a whole?
We had that in a place, I don't think I have. We've had one or the other, but not a combination of both.
I'm sure I can find a sample from somewhere, I'm thinking, you know, Boyne Valley, a resort commercial, that has more high density residential and commercial.
Go resume.
Yeah. So that would probably be.
What is it called?
Resort.
They call it resort commercial.
You know, that might be a nice name for that area.
Give us some time to pull together ideas, isn't it?
Because of Bay Harbor, everything right there, that.
Yeah, the entire north side of the street is PUD two.
Uh, that's, that's what I was saying, is like, most of that's PUD already, or a lot of it is.
Most of it, farm forest from.
Oh, my size.
So if I came today and said I wanted to build a apartment complex in that farm forest area, you would say, you would say no. Are we right? We, not you, we would say no.
Yes. Yeah, well, we, we would say no.
Right.
Because it's multifamily, it's not allowed in farm forests.
Then you'd have to.
But, but in the, but in, but then in the, uh, master plan, it does call that area to be commercial.
Well, it's.
Commercial and high density, they, they worded to something that we don't allow in our present zoning ordinance. So that's why I'm saying it's, we have to create a, a new ordinance to allow what the master plan says.
A new order, yeah.
Yeah, a new district.
Yeah, new district.
Yeah, there, there's what we have now.
Right, there's pretty.
And commercial not allow high density residential.
And it would technically not allow for commercial either.
Not farm forest.
Forest, forest dude, like, uh.
There's some lumber.
Yeah, but it's not, it would love to put a car dealership there, no.
Nope. Fast stations, no. Has to be related to farm industry or residential, you put R one in there. Minimum lot size of two acres or whatever.
I think Tim makes a good point though, you look at that, what is gonna develop along that corridor? You're not gonna come in and answer that and take rezoning, and we don't have the correct districts, and rather than rezoning now, my recommendation is come up with a new district first. And then think about, just see. Question, well, one of the questions is, do you want to fight it one time? With everyone around the area, or do you want to fight it every time?
That's my.
Right. But it's not even that, we don't have the correct district.
Yeah.
Who allow the future land use plan.
Right, but we're, we're gonna have to fight that fight when we face it, if we come up with a new district.
Yeah.
But we only fight it once, because then after that, everything falls under.
Yeah.
That, that's my point, I.
Yeah.
Plus they come and ask for a rezon, which they could, they could ask for, yeah, they could come in, just like Blackbird said, well, we we're requesting a rezon of the new district.
Didn't really enjoy that process.
No. No, but that, but if that hadn't have been, that hadn't have been back to door to the subdivision now, that would have swung through our stride. That was just location.
And you're gonna have Crooked Fabi and them, they're gonna.
How many I made on during the meeting and then always gonna happen, I don't know that I made the minutes, but in most zoning planning, Randy can describe this, because he taught the class, is usually you transition from residential, you don't just draw a line and sand and turn it right into industrial off the residential transition. You know, so transitioning from R one to R two is actually a natural transition, then go to commercial and or industrial, they transition out of those zones so that you don't just have a big industrial plot next to R one. And to me, the Blackbird parcel being R two is actually a natural transition into what the corridor future land use shows.
Right.
I, I, I don't have the answer for the district, I'm just saying, to me, that was a natural transition. So R two, I wish we could do that down through there, because I, I don't know how you you, you have to have all encompassing new district that allows a mixed use, is I think what it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be mixed use.
Yeah. I mean, amending the R two to include more uses.
Yep. I think, you know, that might be an option.
I think the overlay is, because that is really what that's going to be. It's not, you, you're not gonna have, we're not, we're not doing manufacturing and on admission. That's not coming. We are going to have, it would be nice to have some affordable housing, some high density housing mixed in with some of the higher end condos and some of small stores and stuff like that to service those. You know, that, that's the idea with the land use, is that you have, you know, because you're, 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 you're building smaller communities, but you also need to do that, you need to have a small store, you need to have some amenities for those people within walking distance to make it convenient. So I see that overlay, if we can come up with a good plan to do that, if you can find something, to me, that's the ideal use of that property and even maybe move back a little into some of that.
Like from old thirty-one north to thirty-one? It's like an extra.
Yeah. Or even both sides of that.
Like old US thirty-one north to thirty-one? For both side, whatever.
Well, you got, well, you have house, I mean, I don't know, like, this is their plot, because we don't have houses all along, I guess they're on this side, they're on the southern side, right?
Yeah, well, on the southern side, the greens.
Yeah. Also.
There's not a lot of housing in there, if you see, the, the larger parcels are farmland, yeah, they're still. Well. But I mean.
The question, the question is, come up is, should we address it? We could do a study, we could do, uh, take a look at some information on it. If you can pull up some language. And see if we can borrow from it and see if it makes sense, it might not make sense after we look at it.
Right.
You know, too.
Right.
And then maybe just. Okay, so what do we do, we ask staff to come up with it?
Yeah, we'll come up with.
After you look at it and you decide that it would be too much of a battle to, you know, as people apply, I mean, you'd have to look at what that language might say, you know? Because it might be opening up potential canned words too.
Yeah, we don't know until we.
Just take a look. And so I noticed, uh, since we're in, uh, Commissioner Comment and we passed the, uh, zoning ministry report, the corridor study information, that was, some of it was in the packet. I noticed in the minutes that, uh, you might put, you, you staff put a comment in there about, uh, really, we don't have control of that information or, or the, uh.
Control.
I think what we were looking for as a board was the information more than the control of it. Would, you know, that way, as people apply, you know, and they're saying, well, traffic, traffic, we hear that all the time, traffic, traffic, traffic. Well, it, it shows on there that, you know, it can handle way more traffic than we're introducing on these, as these applicants become the forest. Well, if we had that in front of us, we can, you know, use it in our minds to make our decisions, I don't know that we have to present that to the, you know, but even, even Tammy, when she wrote that and from the county, who's the zoning minister at the county, that you could, they were suggesting you could do a corridor study, well, but or, well, that's what they were suggesting, and so we took it to the next level and said, well, let's find some information. What is the corridor study, is it, it's traffic? It's, what else is involved in a corridor study?
It, it's really wide open, you know, it depends on how we want to approach it, if we're thinking of traffic calming measures, you know, we take it at that, or thinking of how development on either side of the corridor is gonna land use perspective, we look at it from that perspective. I don't think there's a right or wrong way to look at it.
Whether it's pedestrian, that friendly or not.
Yeah.
Well, that includes infrastructure.
That's part of the study, or.
Because, well, I mean, that's why it kind of makes use, because it does have, it has traffic capacity according to M D, has infrastructure according to, you know, according to the city, and, and I mean, it's kind of like, how far off does the water sewer go? Those, again, those almost, uh, Bay Shore.
And Bay Harbor.
It goes up to Bay Shore.
Um, I thought that on, on here, during the plan re, this review, we, this discussion came up, right, and what we thought we had to do is put a map together showing where the water and sewer is on the map, and I don't know that we actually have that map, but that would be one part of the study that we could say, you know.
Goes up to, it goes up to Inertown Road on the other side, doesn't it?
I know the information's available, I just don't think that we have it.
That's a, I mean, for most commercial properties or high density, that's a limiting factor, is, is the water and the sewer, right? Because no one's, no one's gonna do a septic in that regard, unlikely.
We, we, in the past, left it up to the applicant to do his own footwork.
Right.
Saying, you know, it's not available, you know, or it is available. And I guess the study would include for our own knowledge is, yes, it is available. You know, then maybe it would sway your vote one way or another on these applications, you know, it's like, well, it's got infrastructure, you know, it's got the right zoning, it's got. So.
You know, and I know, I know people are, are people talking about track, but it truly is. It, I mean, friend showed us the time it took and it was twenty-nine seconds to wait. You know, twenty-nine seconds to wait to get a spot. That's not a lot.
I do it every day.
It's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
I go to the end of Resort Pike.
I go down to the end of Lake Grove.
And it's a flow, it's.
And it's because the light. And it's because the light change is getting stops the flow of traffic. Sometimes you don't wait at all.
Right out.
So, you know.
So if we did a corridor study as suggested by the county, I mean, what what info, what are we gonna use it? How are we gonna use it? It's knowledge we have. I mean. We know that they're saying a hundred thousand cars a day and we're at thirty four, so we know we're only thirty percent in.
Right.
Well, somebody says it's gonna increase traffic, but you know, no, we already have that information.
Right.
It's time to put us past capacity. Not only that, but that's M dot's control, not ours. Well, we have the information. That's what the corridors gonna tell us.
This means we can now tell them that's untrue.
What's that?
We can now tell them that's not true when they come and tell us it's the least track.
Well, that's.
We'll pull together what we can, what is already. Done, so we have it.
Right.
Some information. And we could call it a study that way. We've got something to. Put in the clipboard, essentially, I mean, and and it's knowledge that we'll have. I personally would like to know. I I know that the information's available to the city, where they have their infrastructure, where it ends. I know it's available. I think it's just a matter of talking to the city and getting it. And if, what's her name, housing, yeah.
Lindsay.
Lindsay, she actually has that information and she said she was going to get it for us. And.
Right.
A couple of meetings ago, but I think the city didn't have it completed or something.
They're working on the database. They're working on the database where it will all be available if you want.
Well, let's just put that on the board, but I think it's gonna be on the, how's that sound? And they're gonna pull some line, see if there's language available that would even fit another district. If it doesn't fit, then we'll have to regroup on. Fair enough. Gives them direction, answer your question from now on, and we go from that. All right, public comments, I already did that. No, I didn't. Public comments on non-gen items, we have no public, so hearing none. Move on, items reported to township board trustees. We passed, uh, the two cases in front of us. Uh unanimously. Uh, we have two applications, that's not a. There was no report, they don't have to do the housing. Uh, there's just the two actions that we took.
Yeah.
And. If you want a part of the report, you could say that the board had asked staff to pull some information together on corridor zone. Okay, corridor study. Corridor, part of, as part of the corridor study. I mean, the rezon is part of. That way we have something on record on the minutes, too, that it's, this board is looking at it, yeah. And. Where it goes, we'll see where it goes. Next meeting scheduled for June twenty fourth. Can everybody make it?
Excellent.
Uh, nothing left on the agenda, we'll adjourn. Thanks for coming.